Call a meeting to order in accordance with 940 CMR 29.10, remote participation adopted by the Greater Lowell Technical School Committee April 17, 2014. Committee Men O'Hair will be participating at tonight's meeting remotely. No in-person attendance and members of the public will be permitted. All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Roll call.
Mr. Kiggy?
Here.
Mr. Getchea?
Yeah.
Mr. Sheen?
Yeah.
Mr. Bahu?
Yeah.
Mr. O'Hair?
Yeah.
Mr. Lemay? Mr. Morin?
Yeah. Public appearance. We're gonna be suspending the public appearance portion and going right into the meeting. I'd like to start by introducing this year's student representatives, Ms. Karen Vinyl. Superintendent Davis is now gonna provide us with a little background info on Karen's many accomplishments throughout her time here at Greater Lowell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Karen Vinyl is a resident of Tingsborough and entered Greater Lowell from Tingsborough Middle School. Karen is a senior, majoring in Computer aided Drafting Design, otherwise known as CAD, and is ranked fifth in her class with an overall average of 4.36. A member of the National Technical Honor Society and National Technical Honor Society, sorry, a member of the National Honor Society and National Technical Honor Society, Karen has a rigorous academic schedule which includes Advanced Placement English Literature, Advanced Placement Calculus, and Honors Physics. Karen has also completed dual enrollment coursework in Chemistry through her partnership with Quincy College. Karen has had a variety of work experiences, including a key role on her family's racing team. In fact, she used her CAD skills to design a super modified car wing for her family's racecar, which resulted in two wins last season. That's awesome, Karen. She has also worked as a GPS technician for Lee Vinyl Excavation and was selected for the focus program at BAE Systems. A three-year member and captain of our varsity swim and dive team. Karen is also the president of the Greater Lowell Technical High School, Chapter of Skills USA, and Skills USA State and National Medalist in Principles of Engineering Technology. In addition, Karen implemented a Skills USA freshman outreach initiative which earned national recognition in both 2019 and 2020 through the Skills USA Models of Excellence Program. Last December, Karen was selected as Student of the Month for her embodiment of our core values through her commitment to community service, outstanding leadership in high academic achievement, and impressive technical proficiency. So we welcome Karen Vinyl as the student representative for the 2021 school year to the school committee. Welcome, Karen.
Now I'd like to turn it over to Karen, who will give her fresh report.
As we begin the new year in student activities, we'd like to take a moment to reflect on last year's accomplishments. During the 2019-2020 school year, 210 students were recognized in our Caught Doing Good Initiative. 680 students participated in clubs and activities worldwide, and more than 120 students participated in our community service learning programs. Our 2020 Skills USA district competitors were able to take the district test before school closed in March. 190 Greater Lowell students participated in a Modified Skills USA District Four Competition, where testing took place in our cafeteria. Only one other school, Shawshene Tech, was able to arrange for a similar school-based district testing before all schools were closed. In the Modified District Four Competition, our students claimed 32 gold medals, 36 silver medals, and 30 bronze medals with 16 perfect score medallions. Although Skills USA canceled the 2020 state and national events due to COVID-19, judging for the Chapter Excellence Program took place as planned. For the fifth consecutive year, Greater Lowell was recognized on the state and national level as a Skills USA Gold Level Chapter of Distinction. In addition, for the fourth consecutive year, Greater Lowell was selected as a National Model of Excellence. This past June, Samantha Barnes and myself presented our program to the National Committee through a virtual platform. For the 2020-2021 school year, Greater Lowell student activities will be piloting the feasibility of remote clubs and organizations and assessing which ones can effectively operate in a remote model. Skills USA has pledged to return to their regular schedule of activities, events, and competition, even if those events will be conducted in a hybrid or virtual mode. Here at Greater Lowell, we will be creating a remote process for student and staff involvement in Skills USA contests, curriculum, and programs. National Honor Society and National Technical Honor Society will be inducting members for the 2020-2021 school year and will be inviting eligible students to apply for membership in the coming weeks. In addition, the following clubs will also be participating in our pilot program: Anime, Drama Club, Yearbook, Class Planning Committees, Math Club, and GSA. Finally, we are excited to announce that our 2020 Homecoming Week has been expanded to two weeks to allow more student engagement under our current hybrid learning model. Homecoming Weeks will be November 2nd through the 14th and will feature a variety of virtual events to rejuvenate school spirit and Griffin pride. Activities will include a Flat Griffin photo contest, Neymar Griffin competition, Spirit Days, and election of our Homecoming royalty. The week will culminate with the drive-through Yearbook pickup event for our 2020 graduates. And in athletics, despite facing many challenges this fall, the Fall Athletic Teams who are currently competing have not missed a beat. Nearly 400 students registered to try out for the programs permitted to run this fall. Golf has seen a significant uptick in participation this season, with over 20 athletes trying out for the team. The team has played well in early-season matches with Essex Tech and Lowell Catholic. The team will travel to face Shawshene on October 14th. Cross-country raced out to a fast start in their meets with Innovation on October 1st and Essex Tech on October 10th. The team saw over 40 runners come out this season, with many promising newcomers to go with a solid group of returners. Boys soccer had a large number of athletes come out this fall, with nearly 60 competing for a spot on the rosters. The team has picked up early-season wins over Innovation Academy in Mystic Valley and will host Shawshene tomorrow on October 16th. Girls soccer, who has also had a high number of participants try out, has seen, has bent out to one of its strongest starts in recent memory. The Lady Griffins notched wins over Shawshene, Innovation Academy, Notre Dame Academy, and Lowell Catholic to start the season. They hosted Innovation on October 15th and will travel to face Shawshene on October 16th.
Thank you, Karen.
Thank you very much.
Karen, and welcome.
Welcome.
Great work, thank you.
Need a motion to approve the minutes for the September 10th?
So moved.
Mr. Tatzios? Mr. Sheen?
Mr. Tatzios?
Yes.
Mr. Kiggy?
Yes.
Mr. Getchea?
Yes.
Mr. Sheen?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hair?
Mr. O'Hair?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Morin?
Yes. Need approval to approve the minutes for the September 17th meeting.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Seconded by Mr. Bahu.
Mr. Tatzios? Mr. Kiggy?
Yes.
Mr. Getchea?
Yes.
Mr. Sheen?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hair?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Morin?
Yes. Report of the Treasurer. Motion to waive the reading.
Yeah, motion to waive.
I think he's on the line.
Second.
Yeah.
Mr. Tatzios?
Yes.
Mr. Kiggy?
Yes.
Mr. Getchea?
Yes.
Mr. Sheen?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hair?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Morin?
Yes. Need a motion to approve the expenditures of $4,030,279.39.
Second.
Mr. Tatzios?
Again.
Mr. Kiggy?
Yes.
Mr. Getchea?
Yes.
Mr. Sheen?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hair?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Morin?
Yes. Part of General Counsel? No. Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First item on my agenda, I'd like to inform the committee that Greater Lowell Technical High School has been awarded a $20,000 grant to support machining and engineering students from the Gene Haas Foundation. The grant award could be used for scholarships, up to $2,500 per person for manufacturing and engineering students, tool awards, NIMS credentialing, and Skills USA CNC machining. The second item on the agenda is the Cooperative Education Report. We currently have 54 senior students participating in our Cooperative Education Program as of September 30th, and I think you have a report in your packet. This represents 10.8% of the class of 2020-21. A copy of the report is in your packet, and I'd like to note that we are still unable to place early childhood education students out on co-op based on the current state guidelines at this time. However, all of our other students can continue with their cooperative opportunities, including the health students that are out on co-op. My next item on the agenda, I'd like to ask Ms. Lisa Martinez, our Director of Technology Enrollment and Information, to join us to provide the committee with an update on the FY21 enrollment. Should we dim the lights a little?
Hey, good evening, everyone. Nice to see everyone.
Nice to see you.
Thank you. I'm here to provide you with an admissions enrollment update, so you can get started with that. So, the first thing is our admissions plan criteria is located on our website at gltech.org under the admissions tab, and it's actually provided in four languages: English, Camero, Portuguese, and Spanish. So it's still there as well, as well as the criteria. Okay, the first indicator, progress indicator, I'd like to talk about the grade nine applicants. As you can see, this is the five-year for our February numbers, which are provided for the deadline for the first round of applicants. And if, as you can see, for this past year, this 2074, which is an increase of 124 students from 950 from the prior year, as well as our final October 1 numbers, and you'll see that there was an increase this year to 1,172 applicants, up from 80 students from the prior year. Okay, that's for our grade nine applicants. Next progress indicator I'd like to take a look at is our grade nine acceptances. And you'll see, we had 681 acceptances, and the prior year we had 683. That's always a little bit different depending on how many students apply and what the cutoff scores are. So, and then if you look here, we have our October 1 numbers, and additional acceptances after our February were 73.
So we add that to the 681?
So, yes, so we would add that, yes.
So we took in 754 students this year?
So what would happen is, when we get to the next slide, you'll see how many declines we had in completes as well as waitlisted students. So for our next indicator, we have our grade nine declines in completes, et cetera. And again, we had, last year we had 148. That changes from year to year up to 226. And again, that number increased certainly because we had more applicants. Then we had our grade nine waitlisted students, and this is as of October 1. We had 350 students on our waitlist, and again, that's up from 262 this year. And again, we had more applicants as well, and which would explain the increase for this year.
And that's just for freshmen, huh?
That's just for freshmen.
That is, that's a stifling number.
It is. Next progress indicator is our grade 10 acceptances. Last year, we've increased, we went from 17 to 20, and then this year, we had one acceptance. And the reason for that is not many, we had a decrease in withdrawals over all grades last year. So we were only, we were only able to accept one 10th grade student this year, as of October 1. The waitlist for 10th grade students as of October 1 was 55 students. So, new for this year, we actually have, and moving forward, there's a new DESI state reporting for our waitlist. And we now have to upload our waitlist to DESI, and that's due in November of this year. And we actually need to upload quite a bit of data collection. For grades nine and 10, we'll have to upload all the student data for all of the indicators that I had just recently reviewed with you, as well as the component scores and how we got to those scores, applicant eligibility and supporting data, all needs to be uploaded, as well as the admission waitlist and the supporting data of why students were accepted or why they declined or why they were waitlisted. So that, this is the first year we'll be doing that. And then, I also have the enrollment report for our, for October 1 numbers. And for grade nine, we have 596 students as of October 1. For grade 10, 584 students. For grade 11, 561 students. And for grade 12, 538 students, as well as our special programs, 18 students, for a total of 2,297 students. Does anybody have any questions?
Mr. Bahu?
Lisa, back to page three, I'm just sort of getting a little confused. As far as the progress indicator goes, you have 681 students were accepted, and then it looks like 73 more were accepted. So, were some of those 681, did they sort of decline admission here? And then we had, we were allowed to accept more students, is that what that is?
Exactly, exactly. So over the course of, when we have the initial acceptances in March, many of the students over the summer, we do quite a bit of family outreach, as well as to find out if the students are actually going, planning to attend Greater Lowell. And sometimes, they don't necessarily register. We then go, also go to their homes. Some students declined, some students have applications that were incomplete, some of the students moved. And so during that summer, then we're able to accept students once they decline.
Great, and of those 73, were they part of the 350 that are waitlisted?
Yes.
So the waitlist is actually 350 minus 73, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, so our waitlist is somehow going down.
Going down.
And are we backfilling these things? The students say they're not able to come here and such?
Yes, we do, it's constant. We have the enrollment, the constant enrollment, yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
Rolling, rolling admissions, yes.
So we seem to follow them right through the whole process? It looks like, as far as, once they, like the ones from Lowell that end up at Lowell High or whatever, we follow them right through?
Yes, yes. And what we do is, for parents who may have not registered, we actually follow through with them, with the family outreach through phone calls, through actually home visits, and to make sure that the students are not, say there's not a language barrier or something. We do everything possible to have the students register, and then often they make adjustments at the last minute, either attend their district school, or they move, or they choose to attend elsewhere.
I sense that they're very appreciative of the process and the follow-ups and everything, whether there's a language barrier or not.
Yes. It's really helpful because often there is a language barrier, and for some reason, they may have not been able to navigate the registration process. We also work with our sending school guidance counselors in case we need phone numbers or address changes and things like that.
Well, my hat's off to you and your staff and guidance and everybody included, the job that you're doing on it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa.
You're welcome. Thank you.
So the next item I have on the agenda is, I would like to ask Mr. Michael Barton, our Assistant Superintendent Principal, to join us to present the Health and Safety Plan to the committee for approval.
Good evening, everyone. The Health and Safety Plan, just getting my notes here. The Health and Safety Plan is a document that's renewed every three years, so it's up for renewal in the fall of 2020. Just an overview of the document. The document contains policies and procedures in terms of instructor responsibilities, general student safety, and accident injury procedures to avoid occupational accidents. Includes the reporting, the role of the school nurse, and specific measures for things such as bloodborne precautions, asbestos, and provides details on overall record-keeping. It also describes various health and safety committees, including the Safety Steering Committee, which is the key committee in the school. One of the changes this year is, or certainly with this plan, the update with this plan, is to include in the Safety Steering Committee the athletic director and the school nurse in order to provide a bigger panoramic inclusion of different things that happen in the school, including sports, activities, and then the perspective of the school nurse. Lastly, it includes a description of how documents associated with respiratory, excuse me, respirators are to be handled and maintained. So the biggest update by far in the safety plan is the Respiratory Protection Program. So, as you can see there, the RPP provides guidelines that are designed to help reduce employees' and students' exposure to occupational air contaminants, chemicals in the air, and also to provide for prevention of oxygen deficiency when students are working in things such as masonry, auto collision, carpentry, shops where respirators are used and employed. So it includes descriptions of types of respirators, how they're made to be used in the school. It provides details on the program administrator and his role, which happens to be Artie Cornellia, the supervisor of the Transportation Manufacturing Cluster. It also includes details on what to do if there's a malfunction or damage to the respirator. And it also includes a medical evaluation questionnaire that needs to be filled out by students before they can even begin to handle a respirator or operate one. And that document needs to be signed by parents and turned into the school nurse. So overall, the major changes are the inclusion of the nurse and the athletic director in the Safety Steering Committee, and the update to the Respiratory Protection Program. Any questions?
Motion to approve.
Mr. Tatzios?
Yes.
Mr. Kiggy?
Yes.
Mr. Getchea?
Yes.
Mr. Sheen?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hair?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Morin?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Part of the Business Manager?
Just have another item on the agenda?
Oh, you do?
Yeah, I do. So, my last and final item on the agenda is to provide you with an update on the current health metrics and our reopening plan, and where we are in regards to making a decision regarding our current instructional model. So as we continue to monitor the public health conditions in our key municipality, which is Lowell, and under the guidance provided by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, the Department of Public Health, and in consultation with our local health department, which would be the city of Lowell as well as the town of Tingsborough, I wanted to provide you with an update on the decision to transition to a full remote instructional model beginning Monday, October 19. So over the last several weeks, we've been paying close attention and monitoring the COVID-19 weekly public health report, as well as monitoring identified close contacts, symptomatic individuals, and confirmed COVID-19 cases of individuals within our school community. Currently, the public health data for the city of Lowell is indicating an increasing trend in the average daily rate of number of cases, which has gone from 7.9 to 16.4 currently, which, this has doubled the threshold number over the last several weeks. The public health data in the city of Lowell is also indicating a trend in the percent positivity rate. When we started school, the percent positivity rate was at 1.98, and currently it is at 3.29, which is again, one of the highest, among the highest positivity rates in the state. Greater Lowell Technical High School has seen an increase in the number of close contacts, symptomatic individuals, and positive COVID cases within our school community over the last several weeks as well. In addition, in consultation with the local Board of Health, they have recommended that we can, we look at using three weeks of data. They believe that this is an appropriate threshold period of reports and support our decision to transition to a full remote learning model. They agree that the data is currently reflective of a trend. They also, in discussion with them, in regards to the data, that the data reflects a community spread, and it's not isolated to one demographic as it was when we began in March, where in March we saw some outbreaks in nursing homes. Now, the spread is more, more throughout in several different age groups. As the public health data continues to indicate a spread in the community, our participation numbers in our hybrid learning model have decreased as well. More students are currently shifting to full remote learning. Currently, we have 400, approximately 450 families who have requested to switch to full remote learning, and at the start of school, we had approximately 150, despite when we had our first indication of being in the red, and then spiked again when we had our first case. And as the weeks, as the weeks go on, they continue to come in, more families requesting to be full remote. I believe all the decisions that have been made currently during the COVID-19 pandemic have been very, very difficult decisions to make, but have been made with the health and well-being of our students and staff at the forefront of our minds, and will continue to be that way. Greater Lowell Technical High School's reopening plan, which was approved by the committee, was designed specifically to be flexible, to move to these different instructional models as necessary, based on the guidelines provided by the Public Health Department and the health metric, as well as the guidelines provided by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. At this time, moving forward to a full remote At this time, uh moving forward to a full remote learning is the safest learning environment for students, staff, families and our community at large to help be proactive to prevent uh the spread. Uh, do I have any questions? Yes.
So, I know we're prepared just as well to that. I'm just wondering, wha- what is the protocol or the governor's ruling relative to when we can revert back? Does it need to be w- one week data, two weeks, h- how is that?
So just to, just to be clear, uh Mr. Lemay, it's not the government's uh decision. This is not a government, it's it's based on the Department of Education and the public health metric and they are advising that we follow the same guidelines that we use to transition to full remote, that we look at three weeks of data and three weeks of data are reflective of a month of, a month of change, uh which which would establish some sort of a trend, if there would be one.
So we're we're uh at least prepared for the next several weeks.
Yeah, so we're we're prepared to move forward. I think our reopening plan, I s- as I said, was designed with the flexibility uh so that we can transition to and from uh different instructional modes as we s- as we see necessary based on the public health situation.
I followed Lowell closely um through the manager's office as far as uh dispersing information and I I found that uh last night, so. I guess it didn't look forward to it, but I I guess we expected something down the road, but I I still say that we've been more than prepared for whatever's come across our door.
I I think we've
Stand ready to accept people back as soon as the numbers go down.
Yeah, I I think we've been proactive. That's Mr. Kiggy.
Well, I think everybody on this committee believes that the health and safety of the students and the teachers and the administration is first and foremost. It's very unfortunate that there is a rise or an increase that I don't think any one of us really can prevent at the present time. It's unfortunate and sad that the students are the ones that are truly suffering. They're here for a vocational education and we can't give it to them in the full capacity that we want to. Um, I saw recently the litigation initiated in Boston. Um, and the judges, that particular judge sided on the side that remote learning probably wasn't in the best interest and the numbers have been ticking up. So as a committee, it's, I guess, we have to make that decision to kinda to um move in a safe and prudent and the balance, it's a balancing test right now. And I, I don't know if I agree wholeheartedly, that's a personal belief, with the numbers that are being presented, seven point nine to six point, sixteen point four. The demographics, um, there are six point three million residents in the state of Massachusetts and somewhere I saw there were ten thousand cases. That's a very low percentage within the entire state. It tends to migrate to the highly populated, densely populated areas, for which Lowell is one of them. Even though we sit in Tingsborough, but a majority of our students do come from the popular dense area. And I will defer to the administration and the committee on how they want to proceed, but it's a delicate balancing and I'm not convinced that we're really doing the students a service here, balancing out the risk, but if we lost one student to this, none of us could live with ourselves, so. It's a, it's a tough call, tough call. And it is increasing, it's increasing throughout the state from everywhere you're reading. It's even increasing with our border state, Nashua, New Hampshire is on the the red and so this area is prone to a problem, I guess. We gotta kinda curtail it and see what we can do going forward.
Like, you know, I I think my heart breaks for the seniors this year because it there's no, you know, they have no control over it. I think, you know, Jill and her administration are doing a fantastic job. This is just, it's a, it's a, it's a lose-lose situation for everybody. Um, you had mentioned, uh, was Desi finally getting involved? Like before, it was ju-ju whatever, now, what do they, like, did they want to report or something like that or?
Oh, oh, no, 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 uh. Yes, we do have to report our cases, I'm sorry. We do have to report our cases on a weekly basis, so they are keeping uh track and monitoring our our cases and helping, supporting us with making decisions uh in the best interest of our students and our communities.
Is there a possibility that we might be able to offer like summer school to some of these technical areas? Because, you know, like some of these kids, they need their hours in order to go to start like an apprenticeship or, you know, whatever technical uh, you know, shop they're in. Like I said, it, and it's not, and again, uh my hat's off to the administration. It's everybody's hands, it's it's a lose-lose situation.
So myself and the Assistant Superintendent, we're just talking about this yesterday in regards to uh doing some summer bootcamps for technical programs and invite students and in the summer, if we can get the teachers available to be able to provide some uh, I I call them bootcamps, where you can uh catch up on the skills that you might have not have been able to practice uh during the school year. Uh, we are going to continue to uh offer cooperative education for those students who have been in person uh since school started and are are out on co-op. They'll, they'll have the opportunity to c- continue to stay out in co-op uh unless the public health conditions change, uh with the exception of our early childhood students who are uh unable to go out on co-op right now because that because of the fact that we're in the red and some of the early childhood centers that they might wo- work at are in the red as well. And that direction is also provided under the, under the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. So we're doing our best to get our our students out there uh as 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 much as we can, uh knowing that our employers have to also commit to being able to provide health and safety for our students and follow the COVID nineteen recommendations that uh Desi uh provided us with.
My thing is, is whenever Desi makes a suggestion, it's for the general type education and not so much for the vocational side of education. So we get hauled into this global, general end education kinda model when in fact we are a different educational model. And how do we push back and how can we push back to say that it's very important for our students to be in school, learning their skills?
So, so we have uh been in contact with that Desi. The uh Center for Career and Vocational Technical Education has meetings every Monday with uh superintendents, assistant superintendents uh across the state to discuss some of the issues in regards to vocational education. Uh, again, they're supporting our continuing co-op. Uh, they've provided us some online resources and they're working the best that they can to help uh support us as vocational technical schools because it is difficult to provide a hands-on education when uh you don't have the opportunity to uh provide that time.
Okay, and the next question, just to follow up, you're mentioning the bootcamps and so forth. Where in our budget is that going to come from? Because the teachers are gonna probably want to get compensated for that time. And if there is room in the budget, can we do it in the evenings and kind of spread it out through the entire day sooner than the summers?
So, uh, yep, we can, after we get through COVID and if the community spread uh declines, we can continue to try to offer things in the night uh on weekends whenever we can. As far as the budget goes, Desi and the state are providing more funding for schools uh during COVID, so we could use some of that funding to supplement uh the skills for our students. We did receive a grant, uh so we do have some funding to provide some uh additional, maybe during vacation weeks, i- if students want to come, weekends if they would like to. So uh we we just started talking about that uh yesterday, literally, to say how can we pro- be proactive and what can we start to do to give them another opportunity when the time comes outside of the school day to maybe earn some of that extra earn those skills and learn those skills, so they'll be ready.
Yeah, this model doesn't only hurt our kids vocational, it's hard on the parents. You know, they're at home trying to get the child up to watch a computer. That's a challenge, especially when it's educational. If it's their friends or a video game, not so difficult, but education-wise, I observed it in person this past week with my own family, uh remote learning from Maryland. And I saw my nephew sleeping with the computer on. I find, you know, I think he's not unlike some of the other students.
So these are very challenging times for everyone and we appreciate our parents. We 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 know it's very difficult for for our parents. We we understand it's difficult for our students and we're trying to provide the best that we can for them under, under the current circumstances. We're committed to do that and we will continue to do the best, the best that we can under the circumstances. And I I'm, I truly believe that as a school, we have, we were able to open school. We were able to get students in person in learning, uh and unfortunately uh due to something that's currently out of our control. But we will continue to provide them well uh in education through rem- remote learning the best that we can.
Okay. So we would like the community to know that we are attempting to balance safety with education and we're doing what we can. And if anybody wants to send any suggestions in, we're welcome to receive those inputs.
Yes, Mr. Bahu.
I just want to take my face mask off. So our numbers went from seven point nine to sixteen point four in basically a month. And what is that sixteen point four, is that per hundred thousand in the
Yes, it is.
area?
No, yeah.
It's per thousand, I think.
Per hundred thousand.
It's per one hundred thousand. And we've had about, I mean, we've been open about four weeks now. You're telling me four hundred and fifty families are choosing uh not to send their student.
Uh huh, and that, that seems to be increasing each week.
I'm sure it is. Um, how many cases have we had from the student body in the building?
Can I just speak about, sure. Three.
Three, confirmed?
Yes.
Listen, it's all about, you know, the safety of not only our students but of the families that, you know, they go home to on a daily basis. And the last thing we want to do is um add to this pandemic. We all know what my feeling is on trying to educate students in person. Um, and I know this is, unfortunately, school closing seems inevitable. Um, and I I guess realistically, we have to look at the rotating number of weeks and when we see one yellow week, it doesn't necessarily mean we can open, does it?
It does not.
What?
We would, we would need to look for three consecutive weeks of a yellow or a green to to, and look at the data closely to be able to reopen, yes.
So if we went to yellow, yellow, red, yellow, yellow, red?
Well, depending, if we were yellow, yellow and then red because of an outbreak in a nursing home, that would be a discussion that we would have because it really wouldn't be a community spread.
Right, but we don't know if it's outbreaks in nursing homes, do we know the, is the
Well, currently, currently, right now, based on a discussion with the Department of Public Health, it's not, ca- cases are not significant. There's not evidence of that like there was in March. You know, the data currently in Lowell shows it's, it's really currently right now uh w- within the age range of zero to nineteen and then between thirty and thirty-nine is, is pretty high for this week.
So the zero to nineteen numbers are higher than they have been, is that what I'm hearing?
According to this week's report, it's reflective of twenty-two percent of the cases in Lowell. No?
No, uh, go ahead. How many cases, how many cases are in Lowell right now?
How many cases are in Lowell?
Do you know, you're saying twenty-two percent?
Yeah, I do.
Yeah.
So if, are you want me to look at the Lowell report or the state report?
I think the Lowell report.
The Lowell report, two hundred and five.
It's two hundred and five and twenty percent are zero to nineteen years old?
Forty.
Twenty-two percent.
So about forty cases?
Forty-five.
Forty-five. And of course, those are all, those are all school age students and such like that. And we don't know if they go Lowell High, Grade Lowell Tech or private school, but, you know, it's all about the pandemic. And so this is something we can look at, I guess, a few weeks from now.
So every week, um, we're monitoring the data very closely every week. Every Thursday morning, myself, the Assistant Superintendent, the school nurses, the Director of Guidance and the Director of Human Resources meets and takes a good look at this data and has discussions. We also look at our uh our close contact tracking, our symptom tracking within the building and positive cases. And that's, th- those are the discussions that we have every Thursday morning and we'll continue, continue to do that and uh watch the data.
If we have three weeks where um driving city Lowell, I guess, drops from the red to yellow and we have three yellows, does that mean in the the fourth week, we can go in-school?
That means after that third yellow, you can start?
In-school?
Yeah.
And are we capable of doing it that quickly from remote to back to in-school?
So, yep, so basically, we designed our reopening plan to be flexible, to be able to do that. Uh, and our hope is that when we are able to transition out of this, that we will actually be able to start in-person learning two days for our grade uh ten through twelve students, as we committed to based on our reopening plan. We, we have everything uh prepared for that. Uh, we were headed to to be able to do that as we committed to in our reopening plan. So uh if, when we transition back to uh in-person learning or a hybrid form of in-person learning, we'll be able to provide two days of in-person learning for our grade ten through twelve students as in our, that would be hybrid mode B as we proposed uh in our reopening plan to occur at the end of quarter one.
So what I'm hearing is we don't actually have to have a school committee meeting to do that because we've already said that's our plan.
Yes.
And so this school's going full remote special needs as well?
Uh, no, so the s- the students with significant disabilities will be coming to school.
Okay, well, that's good news.
The Department is asking that we continue to provide services for those students.
What makes them any different other than their need?
We are committed to do that.
For health and safety.
I would ask that question to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. They asked us to prioritize learning for those students and will continue to provide learning for them as long as the health and safety conditions provide uh, provide us uh to doing that.
Because the state's saying it's not safe for them right now, so we're putting them at risk, yet taking our vocational students and saying they, they have a high need too to be in school and we're taking them out of the equation. And it seems like there's some because they have the same risk as any other student in the school.
But they also have a higher need, uh higher needs to be able to uh address, to be able to access education in its inequity issue in regards to accessing education.
Yeah, it's that same argument though, because Desi does the general education for the entire state. So now you have the general population, the general, we'll call it the, the regular school. And then vocational school gets sucked into that side of it. And then vocational school gets sucked into that side of it. Yet, then we have this group over here where we say, well, you have greater needs, you have to come. And I think the vocational education falls into that greater needs too. They should be coming. Um, and and again, it's that balance and it, it's whatever group is voicing their frustration with what's going on gets the attention. And we need to keep advocating for the vocational kids to be in school.
Of of those special needs students, how many, how many are there?
There's sixty.
There's sixty?
But all sixty have not committed to coming in.
And they?
So twenty-nine out of the sixty have committed to coming to school.
And they come in every day?
Yes, they do, with the exception of Wednesdays, which is a deep clean.
A deep clean.
They have since we started school.
Okay, so we're going to a full hybrid, starting? Full remote, starting on Monday. Starting on Monday. And how about the athletic programs?
So the athletic programs, we are going to seek advisement from MIAA. If our our student athletes can complete the fall season that they started. That would be their decision, but we're gonna advocate that they do continue to uh to participate in athletics and finish the fall season.
Is is that what other school districts are doing?
I'm not sure what other school districts are doing, but. But uh, we will advocate and uh and and I will advocate at the MIAA. I'm not sure if it's going to be possible, but we will do what we can to seek and find out if it is.
So what would be that? I I I guess my guess would be if we're playing Shawshank Tech, our athletic director may call Shawshank Tech and say, are you playing soccer this week? And they sort of.
So I think there's a game schedule set up right now that they're, they they are scheduled to complete. It's just a matter of if the MIAA will allow us to complete now that we are uh full remote.
So essentially, it's the MIAA, MIAA's call.
Yep, they set the regulations in regards to that and we're we're going to advocate. And uh, as long as we as a board and as a school support our student athletes continuing to to participate in sports, I will discuss that with the MIAA and say that as a board and as a school community, we s- we continue to support the completion of our fall athletes with fall sports. And uh, we'll see what their decision is.
Okay. Mr. Giggie, you spoke about your uh family down in Maryland doing remote learning.
I was with them this week.
I can talk about my family, you know, right here in Lowell, it's, you know, teaching, you know? And they get very frustrating teaching, frustrated teaching from home, so would our s- would our teachers have the opportunity to come into the building?
Yes, our teachers will, are going to be able to have the opportunity to come into the building.
Uh, so it's based on if they're comfortable, it's based on if they want to, how's that work?
So it's going to be an option if they choose to come into the building to teach, yes.
Okay, well, thank you. No more, no, no more questions, Mr. Chairman.
I guess this question is directed to Jill. Would uh ask my colleagues maybe to uh jump in after, but I can only speak for Lowell, being representative for Lowell. And what what is happening as far as uh, the manag- the city manager's office, information gets deciphered pretty good. From what I see, because I'm involved in a few other things. Uh, but the neighborhood groups, they are, all the, all the neighborhoods have a group now and the flow of information to these groups through the city manager's office or liaison is very, very good. Uh, to the point that, I was just wondering, I know you deal with the Board of Health, but do you have a uh, a contact for the other towns relative to how that, how does that all work?
So the key municipality that the Department of Education has directed us to to follow is Lowell. So I have been in constant contact with uh, with the head of the Lowell Department of Health. I've also been in contact as early as about two hours ago and early this morning with uh a representative from the town of Tingsborough. So we speak often and they are uh helping me uh analyze the data. And I I appreciate their support. And they are informing, informing me in regards to the data.
I was just wondering, because all the towns have a Board of Health too, so.
Yes, so.
Wondering to what degree that they would. How you're collaborating.
So, so usually, because we reside in Tingsborough, I would be communicating with the town of Tingsborough. But because the Department of Education has dictated Lowell as our key municipality, have, I have been in more contact with the Department of Health, Lowell Department of Health. However, I still am in contact with the Department of Health in Tingsborough as well. And DESI has also assigned a liaison uh to support superintendents uh, and 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 guide them uh through through this time in making difficult decisions when it comes to the health metric and uh a mode of instruction for their school community.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So I just wonder, I want you to know this is not directed towards you. I'm just frustrated, um, very frustrated. So DESI in the beginning, we have three hundred fifty plans across the state, they're spying, they're cut us. They haven't done anything to help us at all. We come into a school reopening plan two weeks before school, we approve it, we come to an MOU with the teachers before school. And by the way, I want to thank you, the administration, the teachers, maintenance, everybody in the school. We did everything. I was out at the soccer field today. Parents out there, staffs out there, thanking us for everything we did to, you know, stop school properly. We we made our effort, we did it. I disagree with DESI, but I support your decision. Um, it it it's it's tough. DESI goes by a community, can you agree on that sixteen point, it was seven point nine, sixteen three, sixteen four, the last three weeks? Okay, they never break it down to school age children. And Joanne over at the healthcare, and I'll I'll tell you, I know Jill's constant contact because I've talked to Jo- uh, Joanne at the health department, I've talked to Kerry, Tingsborough, I've talked to Dave and Drake, usually, we're one right after each other. And I, my total question to them was, the kids. I don't, and don't take this the wrong way, I, I'm speaking for me. My job as a committee member is to educate the kids. Take care of the kids, the teacher, the building. I I'm, and I, people, I'm gonna get ripped for saying this, I'm not worried about ya, ya, gam, gam, grammar at the house. That's the parent's house, the parent. This school, if we have after Wednesday, Captain, you brought it up, let's, let's go through the school, we test positive COVID, we know that's not doable. We had that with Mark last, last, uh, last month. This school doesn't have COVID, the people coming into the school have COVID. It's the parent's responsibility to keep COVID out of the school. It's our responsibility to educate these kids. Now, let's go through with DESI, the last three weeks. Under nineteen, the three weeks ago, thirteen positives, seven thousand tests, point one, point one eight. The health department loaded and break it down to age group up until two weeks ago. So let's really get into these numbers that DESI doesn't want to get into. They want to use the sixties through eighties, fifty through eighties. You know what? I don't care about that, they're not the school. I realize we have teachers in that age gr- group. The teachers need to be vigilant, just like I need to be vigil- vigilant to walk into the school. It's common sense. Two weeks ago, zero through ten, this is the age group, eighteen tested positive out of forty in Lowell. So that's twenty-two, twenty-two. Now, if I really break it down, I have it in front of me, eleven to fourteen, twelve. We have fourteen-year-old freshmen, we have some thirteen-year-old freshmen, so I'll include those numbers. Eight thousand tests in the city Lowell, eighty-three, twenty-two, for a point two six. Let's go to this week. There was forty-five total, sixteen positives between zero and ten. Let's cut it down to twenty-nine. We, ninety-five hundred and sixty-eight tests, point three percent. Is that age group really going up rocketing like DESI said? It's really not. I'm point one two off. It's really not going up. And I, I'm I'm venting, I I I'm actually pissed off. It's just, we're doing a disservice to these kids. Never mind the seniors, how about the juniors that didn't go to shop for March? And I know, I know you feel.
So I think the bottom line is, how do you create a balance and where do you draw the line when it comes to health and safety? And I'm just gonna put it right out there.
No, no, I'm with you.
Put it right out there. Where do you draw the line when it comes to health and safety? There was a guy, there was a guide that was put out, a metric, a health metric that was put out by DESI and the Department of Public Health. The health metric says, when you have three consecutive weeks, that you need to really look at your data. And you need to really decide on if you want to move to 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 a full uh, remote learning mode. So if, where do you draw the line then? If three weeks of data that's showing an increasing trend isn't enough. Where do you draw the line? Do you wait till you have an outbreak in school? Do you wait till 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 something ba- bad happens? Or you do, or do you draw the line and say, right now, there is a risk, there is evidence of a, of a, of a spread in the community? Why don't we be safe? Why don't we be safe?
So I back your decision, but is there really, really a rocket ship in the under eight, nineteen years old? Under, under nineteen, there's not. The data is right there. DESI wants to use the community, and you know what? Fine, they they were useless in the beginning, they're useless now. It's not you, I support what you're saying. One kid is too many. One kid, if one kid gets sick and unfortunately something happens to them, I don't know what I'd be able to do. I sit in this committee, I support your decision. My problems with DESI, they weren't there from the beginning, neither was Gov- Governor Faker. Not Baker anymore, he's Faker. Where was? He wasn't there in the beginning. There was no guideline set for anybody back in March. Nobody knows what they're talking about back in March. If we look out back to March, they're wrong. Nobody really knows what this does. And you know what? I'm I'm fine with error on the side, on this side. I'm I'm fine with that.
I I think with the increase in spread across the state of Massachusetts, just in the last week. There is, I I think sixty-three more communities in red.
Yeah, I I get it, I get it. Maybe we should serve french fries to all the kids that walk through the door, it's a COVID killer. I I don't know, I'm just frustrated.
Well.
I just think we're not, I'm I'm not saying us, I'm saying as a society, as a board, we we did everything possible we could.
A- a- and I believe that we have done everything possible that.
I'm just frustrated.
And I believe we'll continue to do everything we possible, uh, everything possible that we could at the same time ensuring the health and safety of our students, our staff and our families.
Are we really doing that? They can do sports, that's managed by a whole different organization. Sports isn't shut down and have to do it remote.
You know, sports attempt, sports is outside, right now, like I went to the soccer game today. There's outside, there's people, you know, they they're spread out. The MIAA gave guidelines. I I watched the girl soccer game today, by the way, we won, great job by the coaches. It's a great game, it was senior, senior day was unreal. I, you know, it was great watching.
So I'm not sure the guidelines of MIAA will let us continue. It's recommended by the board that I I advocate and ask if sports could continue. I'm not sure. I'm not sure if it's gonna be possible, but I said uh that I would advocate to, for sports to continue. If that was the issue because it it's outside and the season is almost over, it's, it's.
Because they're putting sports higher than education now.
Well, they're not, they're not, and I don't want.
In here, and I don't want that to appear that way.
I'll, that's me, I I. Before, before the meeting, I I was outside and I said to Jill, we have four games left. We already started the season. Uh, they're not going to schools, they're getting on the bus, it's our kids who are going to play outside. We're following the um, MIAA guidelines, five feet. I I watched, I don't even know what we're talking about soccer. They drop the ball, you can't come within ten feet of the kid kicking the ball. Um, I just thought no, we should take care of these kids and at least let them finish the season. It's the right thing to do. We gotta give them some normalcy, I guess. But there's gotta be something that we have to give these kids. We're doing everything possible, Jill, and I'm not directing it towards you. I support your decision a hundred percent. I'm just frustrated that they didn't step in and give us guidelines from the get-go, because we wouldn't be in this position if they did. They chose to give three hundred and fifty school districts their own options. And I'm sorry, Belcher Town is not Lowell. Fall River is not Lowell. I mean, we can go down the river to Lawrence. They haven't opened school up at all in Lawrence, but Central's playing.
That's a private school.
I I I realize they're not by DESI, but they're they're by the MIAA. We have Lowell kids playing on their team, so I I would hope the MIAA sees that and says, hey, we can finish the season. And and Captain, that was all me, it wasn't Jill, I, I didn't know, Freddie. We gotta bring up the athletic piece of it.
I'm most frustrated as Lee is here. Is, I don't know what the percentage is, that the kids are testing positive or they have it, but a hundred percent of these kids are not getting an education. And, and I, now, I know you're doing the best job that you can. And every, you don't have um, the power to do everything. You have to go by DESI's rules, the state and all that, but nevertheless, we're not giving these kids an education. That's why we're here. A hundred percent of them.
Well, I think we're continuing to to give them an education. Because I would think what teachers are doing every day, whether that be in person here or in remote, is providing them with the best education that they can every day. I I'm not gonna take that away from from the teachers, because they are trying to provide them under the current circumstances with the best education that we can com- provide. While still trying to implement the safety protocols that were set.
I understand.
It it, these are very, very difficult decisions. They are very, very difficult decisions.
I, I just think that um from the state level and the federal level, we're not getting the uh freedom to do what uh, we, what each individual s- uh, district would like to do.
Well, I think it's it's guidance, that we have the freedom to make a decision. We do have the freedom under the guidance, under the guidance that they have provided.
Yeah, but if we, if we deviate from that guidance and it's the wrong decision. Are we really free to decide?
Well, Mr. Giggie, I uh.
So I think they, they're setting the rules here right at the moment, and I think to Lee's they basically didn't have the manpower or the ability to deal with the pandemic. So what they did is they deferred it as far out as they could and see what each district was able to put together. And now that they've seen all the different plans, they have a model that they're going to try to push down our throat uh, into the future. And maybe the next pandemic, um, they'll have a better grasp on how to handle it. But it's truly unprecedented and the kids are suffering. We got to get them back to school. And to Lee's thing there, those numbers are not that scary in that age group. They're just not mandating remote learning.
Well, we we do have an increase of families that are choosing remote learning uh, for health and safety reasons. And like I said, that is increasing. We started out with approximately a hundred and fifty and it's doubled. And it continues to go up as the weeks go on because of what's going on.
Again, fear is running people's lives, or they're taking advantage if their employer says, if you have a reason to be home. You can work at home. Your reason now is the kids are remote learning, so now we have to be home. So fear is starting to take over here and we have to be cognizant of that too. And again, we're balancing it, and at this time, we already said this plan was what we were going to adopt in the beginning of the year. So I don't think we can change it, but I can definitely say that I'm, I'm questioning getting the kids back to school.
So.
Judge, I think the term you were looking for was a magic wand.
Okay.
We don't have a magic wand, Jill doesn't have a magic.
No, and and I'm not criticizing.
No, I don't think it's a criticism.
But if we ever thought that we have freshmen in this school, this this year, so every year. What if this goes on for four years? You know, what type of an education will we be giving them? Four years of this. We're doing the best we can, and I would say probably if you compare us to most other districts, we're probably doing better than. But four years, if this continues, of this type of an education? Especially in the trades. I just think it's, we need to.
I just think it's, we need to come up with something better.
And, 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 uh, I don't know how we should phrase this, but I, I guess in a lot of cases, what we would do would be to defer to the experts. If we needed a, a legal thing, we would defer to the attorney. There's no really experts in this pandemic. Uh, they think they're out there. We don't have all the answers. We're trying to do the best we can with what we have, I guess, uh.
It's so unprecedented.
I'm not finding fault. I'm finding frustration, like a few of my colleagues are, but I, uh, I, I wish I had a, a better mind to deal with it, but I don't have those answers. I that's why collectively, hopefully, we can do it. I think we're doing the best we can. Uh, I hear decent things out there from the families in the neighborhoods. Although out in the suburbs, but I don't know what my colleagues feel, but uh, it's, it's not only from a technical standpoint. It's, it's from either parochial school or law high school or wh- whatever you wanna say, but.
Excuse me.
We don't, I, I'm frustrated and I'd like to get answers. If there was someone I knew that would help us, we'd be on the phone, I'm sure, but that's, it's a tough act.
I, I don't, I don't think they're gonna give answers.
But if you look at other countries, education is first and foremost. They're not doing remote learning. Cuz if this goes on for a sustained period of time, you're gonna have an extreme brain drain or a gap. And then we fall behind in the world. And, and we wanna stay on top of them. So Desi might need to look to other countries to see what their models are and how they're preventing, uh, COVID from spreading within the school, the education. Um, they have the more resources than us in this particular building to do that. Now, I'm sure each one of you has watched the world news and that. The media, it has a bias. Uh, but other cultures and other countries are doing it differently and they're putting education first and foremost. The kids are in school. They're not learning outside school. They're making whatever accommodations they can make to get the kids back in school. And maybe we have to look at other answers and other solutions and then what has been developed. And, and that will happen if this becomes more sustained. If it goes into the spring of next year, we're gonna have to look at a different model. But right now, we're stuck with pretty much what we've set up for this year. And we gotta kind of follow it. Jill and the administration have done a great job bringing us the information. And, um, maybe in the next time we look at the numbers and if Lee has the same numbers in the future, maybe we have to look at creating a different model to go back to remote learning. It has to be in that particular age group instead of the general population. We as the committee can do that, at least at this time, but, um.
And tha- and that's not mentioned in Desi's guidance at all?
No. But again, maybe we make a few phone calls and say, hey, maybe we ought to be looking at the data a little different. Cuz data can be manipulated to whatever solution is being presented at that moment. And I think that's what's happening.
However, I don't think the data is inaccurate about a community spread. I think after consultation with the Lowell Department of Public Health and having conversations, uh, they are in agreement that there is a community spread in the city.
It's definitely on the increase. There's no ifs, ands or buts. And I think it's because there's a lot more testing that's readily available to the citizens of the communities. And they're basically mobile and they're, they're free and you get the results, whether they're accurate or not, that can be questioned. You get them pretty much within forty-eight hours.
We're looking to the medical professionals for guidance, for, for guidance on this.
Yep. I, I just got one more thing, but the freshman, you touched upon a freshman. And it just, I, I wrote down on them picking shops. Obviously, they're gonna have to pick a shop.
Last year's freshmen picked the shops remotely.
Yeah, okay, that's.
They did.
Okay, yeah.
Hopefully, maybe things will change and we can come back.
Well, the earliest I'm writing it down, I'm looking on my phone, the earliest we're coming back, next three weeks is the ninth of November. And, I mean, it, it is. It looks like we plateaued Lowell, but I, if you remember number seven, nine, sixteen, three, sixteen, four.
Across the state, it's across the state. It's increasing communities that are starting.
Yeah, I just.
There's an increase across the state.
But I just, I was, when he said freshman, I just wanna make sure we kinda make sure they don't get lost in the shuffle, the shops and uh, it's gonna be hot in remote.
So we're trying to, right now, we're providing an exploratory program for them. There's one day, a week that they come in. And Mike, if you wanna step forward to speak a little bit about the exploratory program.
Yeah, Mike, I'm, I'm just talking about when we, cuz we're gonna go full, we're gonna go full remote.
Right.
So I just wanna make sure they don't get lost in the shuffle with the shops. I, I know it's gonna be hot. I, I mean, that's why you're getting paid the big dollars.
Um, I totally agree with everything you're saying. I think we're all frustrated. I think, uh, to speak specifically about exploratory, uh, we had our transition exploratory this morning, or rather, this afternoon. Um, so we're exploratory, we conducted remotely, uh, the exploratory teachers for the first ten days, that when we did professional development. They spent a considerable amount of time preparing things online so that they could present their shop uh, in the most, uh, the best way, given remotely, but I think, um, the commitment, as I agree with you, uh, it's going to be hard as a freshman to select a shop when you've never really been in it. Um. So I wish I had a better answer for you, but all I can say is that we're doing our best to prepare to provide the best example of what that shop and what that career is like remotely. Um, as, you know, superintendent said, I think, uh, one of the benef-, well, not certainly not benefit, but certainly one of the, the things that I think we need to take a very good look at is uh, using the summertime to not only provide hours for students that need them, but also perhaps providing an experience for the students, uh, that they missed in, in exploratory. So I think we need to, um, really look at the vacation times that we have. You know, if we're able to bring kids in over Christmas vacation or February vacation or April vacation and certainly in summertime, so that we can grab and use as much time as possible. Um, because as we've said since September, uh, remote learning is certainly no substitute for in-person instruction, especially with our mission. It just doesn't necessarily, you know, it doesn't go well, it don't.
No, I just wanna make sure we don't lose them.
Yeah, oh, I agree with you.
I mean, how do you? I pick a shop, machine shop, how do we? A kid, i- i- it's harder to see for that child online, what a machine shop is, and it's harder for the teacher to say, hey, this is a good fit for that, that student. I just, that's all, I'm more worried about now go, uh, look, I'm resigned to the fact we have to, we're doing it. We have no choice.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, like, the teachers, I know they're doing the best they can. I know they're gonna give them the, the best effort. They're doing it now. It's just, it's gonna be harder. We're gonna do classes. Are they gonna do full classes or it's gonna be like, here's an assignment when you're done logging back in? As you, you know what I mean? It's just challenges like that we face.
Right.
I know we'll, we'll be fine. And I agree with George. We're, we're better off than most. You know, and, and I, I truly believe we're better off than most. It's just that, it's, it's just frustrating for me. And it's not directed at you guys. And when George said freshman, I'm like, okay, how, I just don't wanna lose them picking shops. That's all. And it's gonna be hard for them to pick and, uh, let's get, let's be honest, cuz I, I know me when I was fifteen, sixteen, I'm not coming to Greater Lowell in the summer. I don't care. You're paying me to come. I'm not coming.
Well, it depends on.
Well, we do have, in years past, we've had.
A transition program with kids.
You know, I mean, it's gonna be hard to get these kids in the summer to come back to school. I mean, I'm not, I, I'm being honest. And when I was sixteen, the last place I wanted to be, I, I went to Greater Lowell, it was Greater Lowell in the summer.
Mm-hmm.
Here's the problem. The longer they're out of the building, the more lazy they're going to get.
I, I.
Okay, and the less they're going to work.
So I, I think that's part of.
Sorry. So, so one of the things that we've had extensive discussion with teachers and cluster chairs about is, is learning from, uh, learning from what we didn't necessarily do or weren't prepared to do in the springtime to give kids reasons why they want to come to class online. So that they have regular Google meets, so they're seeing each other, so they're talking with their teachers. So there's reasons why they need to get up, get ready and be as normal as possible with school being a setting. So again, it's not, uh, I, I, I'm stressing that, uh, as we've moved forward with this plan, that it should not be, let me post a worksheet, finish that worksheet and I'll catch up with you later. Um, it's more live, I'm seeing you, I'm seeing your friends, we're having discussion, we're talking about what's, what's, what's happening. We can use simulations as best we can, given some software that we purchased in different shops. Demonstrations as best we can. So again, certainly not a substitute for live instruction, but uh, you need to give kids a reason to want to cut up and see each other and be with their instructor. And you want them to, you know, the instructors need to, along with administration, create an environment so that they're getting something out of it and something meaningful. And granted, they came here cuz they wanna be with their friends and they wanna pick a shop and they wanna experience the live instruction. And hey, I, it's, it's frustrating, but I think the charge needs to be to make it as meaningful as possible, as interesting as possible, given this unusual circumstance we're in.
So, are the secretaries in Paris coming to school or they were both?
So, it's a choice. Uh, Paris, the, the Paris that work it with our significant special education students will be in the building with them, which is almost all the Paris that we have. They, they will be in the building working with the, uh, special e- education students. Uh, as far as instructional staff, uh, they have their choice to either come into the building, which many of them have expressed that they'd rather come into the building to teach rather than teaching from home. So they will continue to, to do that. And those who choose, uh, that they prefer to work from home will be, be able to, to work from home.
But I, I know you and I talked about the steroid card, when we talked on the phone, um. Shashi texts doing this and I hate comparing myself to Shashi. I'd rather them compare to us. But they're allowing some of the teachers to bring their children and that, they have to learn remote to bring them into school. I don't know if we looked into that, cuz Desi's, I saw something with Desi website saying it was all right for them i- in a, in a remote learning environment to bring their child into into school because they can use the internet, they can live remotely, kinda bring the teacher into school.
So.
I, I mean, I'm just, I know Shashi's doing.
We have not offered that opportunity for our teachers. Uh, a- at this time, I feel we're not bringing in our own students. Why are we having our teachers bring in their students? Uh, if they, you know, if they choose to come in, they come in. And if they need to work from home, they work from home. Uh, I just don't feel like they, they would be able to do their their, their, fulfill their job responsibilities while having their children in their classroom here at school.
Okay.
Now, Massachusetts calls it a red area if there's eight out of one hundred thousand cases. Or sixteen out of a hundred thousand.
Eight is the threshold.
I- i- is that like a national standard? Is that a, is that a, whatever, a state standard?
I, I would have to look into that. I think that was a standard developed by the Department of Public Health.
Here in Massachusetts.
As eight is the threshold, yes.
Eight per a hundred thousand.
Mm-hmm.
And the numbers that I'm hearing from Lowell, based on what Lee saw, was ten to nineteen is what? Three cases per hundred thousand?
On what?
That ten to nineteen age category?
So I'm looking at, I'm looking at Lowell's data in regards to specifically on the city of Lowell website. So they had two hundred and five cases. Uh, and forty-five of those cases were from students. Uh, I'm, I'm sorry, I shouldn't say students. Were from individuals in the age range, uh, from zero to nineteen.
Yeah, so if you go down a little further, Jill, it says age range zero to five. Uh, there was seven last week. If you go six to ten, there was nine. It's right off their website. I, I, trust me, I, I run it just like you do. I get it every Wednesday night. I'm like, they, Lowell breaks them on Friday.
Mm-hmm.
So ten to nineteen is what? You know the show to me. I can't, I can't get near you. Oh, boy. There you go, eleven to fourteen.
So I guess my question then is, where do you draw the line?
We like, no, I mean, this, this.
I, I'm not a medical expert.
No, neither am I.
I'm following the guidance that the medical and health experts are providing. And I'm not gonna draw the line, uh, when it comes to anybody's health.
No, you, you, like I said, I'm gonna back your call. You're, you're making the call. Desi gave you the guidelines, we're going by that. I don't agree with the Desi guidelines. I agree with your call because you're going by the Desi guidelines. That's me personally. I think we need the kids in school, but.
I think we have an obligation to go by the data because if, if something happens, then it's on our shoulders. So I, I would rather feel somewhat good with myself that the data that they're providing is what's necessary to make the proper decision.
See, I just disagree with the data. I think the data they're providing is misleading. But that's, that's the data we have to go by. So I'm with Curtis, I'm, I'm on board. I mean, the data we go by, I believe is misleading.
We gotta go to the health department. We don't go to Jill.
Right, so.
As much as I'd like to have, have the answer, but.
We don't necessarily have to go by the data. Like, the, the, the state is recommending that we go ahead and go full remote.
Right, you know how.
Based on what they see as color codes.
I, I guess I'll say.
I, I guess the decision then is who, where do you draw the line? What, what is the threshold?
What is the threshold? What is the threshold of people catching the flu? I mean, I'm, I'm not gonna go on. Right? What is the threshold of people getting, you know, a number of years ago, the swine flu? I mean, what is the cor- everything's a goddamn threshold. It's just being, it's, that, that realistically is tainting and manipulating all of us into being scared shit. And at the end of the day, we can't educate students. We have to educate them in a marginal way on a computer while they're on their bed and paying attention when they want to and not. And it's not truly an effective education. But we just have to follow the guidelines because we all have to err on the side of caution.
The threshold is red.
Mr. Barton.
The key is to stay out of the red.
Who's red? Yeah. Charlie Baker's red.
Yeah.
Who, who, what, what's the, what, what color's red down in Tennessee? I mean, is, is, is everything eight out of a hundred thousand? That's why I asked that question. I'm sure it's not. Everybody's coming up with their own distinction.
I think so.
That, that would be the end of my report for tonight. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Jill.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barton.
Thank you.
Mike, you have the floor. Business manager.
Gee, we can't forget the business manager.
I think.
Here we are, here we are.
He just fell asleep over there.
He's all business now.
Should be remote learning.
All right, so on the, uh, ag- agenda first, I have an update on the disposal of surplus property that uh, was requested at the, I think it was last meeting, maybe two meetings ago. Um, but in, since I've been here at Greater Lowell Tech, um, of, I guess, larger value, we've had a couple of different disposal items. One was the nineteen eighty-nine International Rack Body Truck. Uh, actu- and actually, this one, we had interest from the city of Lowell when I had sent it out to our municipalities. Um, and they said they could still use the truck even though it was aging and, um, they thought that their DPW would um, still get some use out of it. So we've transferred title to the city of Lowell and they're registered and it should be out on the road, um, now. Um, the other one was a two thousand and seven Freightliner bus that was semi-converted into a transportation slash shop vehicle. Um, and I put this out to a bid on a public auction site called Munista Bid. We had an initial winning bidder that didn't follow through and complete the purchase, so we listed again. Um, and the second time, we had a, a local company uh, interested in purchasing the bus and they came through and, uh, paid nine hundred and thirty dollars and actually drove it out of the parking lot. Um, so those two items are gone and those are the big ones. The other stuff like tables um, and desks and, and smaller things that we declare a surplus, we generally don't see a lot of action or a lot of interest in. Um, and no one's really, there's not a huge market for tables from the nineteen seventies. So, so it is one of this. Um, the next item on my agenda is an update on the school physician. So our school physician retired, um, at the end of last school year. And although we tried to make an attempt with our insurance company to see if there was a way to keep him on and under our coverage because he was, um, retiring from his own practice, we weren't able to make that happen, uh, financially. So, uh, after searching for a while and putting out a public solicitation that yielded no interest, I was able to work with Merrimack Valley Internal Medicine uh, in contract, in contract with Dr. Dr. Caitlin Waters as well as Merrimack Valley Internal Medicine, um, at kind of an overall perspective. Um, if something were to happen with Dr. Waters or she couldn't make it, we've got backups in their other doctors that are committed as well.
Where are they located, Mike?
Uh, they're affiliated with Lowell General, located in, I believe the main office is Chelmsford, uh, office. Um, but they're not, not far. Um, I actually found them by going through Lowell General and that's where the affiliation came about. Um, uh, but Dr. Waters has a, a focus in sports medicine. She actually currently.
She actually currently works with UMass Lowell in that, in a capacity similar to working with, um, I believe it was their um basketball teams, helping with physicals and sports injuries and things like that. So it makes her a great fit for our sports physicals, as well as um student-related health consulting and and the other um things that we use our physician for. Uh, moving on next, I wanted to bring to the committee a recommendation to close a money market uh account that we have set up with Enterprise Bank. Um, we've had it for at least the last fifteen years or so that I could find in our accounting system. Um, it's rarely been used for uh the last ten of them anyway. It holds a a pretty small balance, right around twenty-seven thousand dollars, and earns um, actually, this is, I'm I'm missing a decimal point here, it's point zero five or point zero four nine percent interest. So we're not really getting a lot out of that. Uh, it's a small amount of money, but we could move it to our money market account through MMDT, which historically has given us like a one point five to one point nine percent return. Um, just get a little bit better return, and it's um just one less place to, one less account to have to worry about and manage uh from my perspective, which is nice, but ultimately, I think it makes sense financially for us to make that move. Um, so I'd look for um someone to make a motion or approve the suggested motion to close this Enterprise Money Market Account, and then we could move our funding over to MMDT.
Motion.
Second.
What was the purpose of that account? Well, is it earmarked for?
I knew, I could not find any history. Um, I chatted with um our treasurer, David Bradley. Knew knew of the account, didn't know why or when it came about. I have a feeling back in the day that this was probably a better money market earner than was available, available in other places. So, I mean, it did hold a balance about twelve years ago, upwards of about a million dollars. So I think that was the main investment vehicle at that point, and since we've moved to the um MMDT accounts and found better returns there.
So it's going to go in that account for a long period of time?
Yep. Yeah, we've maintained pretty much our entire balance of of cash in the MMDT account, only transferring money when we have uh a warrant in the specific amount of that warrant um to other accounts where the money is transferred out.
I would like to say, Captain, that there was probably an affiliation with the bank at the time with someone from the school.
And we still do use Enterprise. They actually handle our our checking accounts for accounts payable and payroll. Um, so we do carry a balance and have active accounts with them. Um, this just wasn't one that was active, I guess, is the only way I could put it.
I'll ma- make the motion.
Second.
Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Gigi?
Yes.
Mr. Getchea?
Yes.
Mr. Sheen?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Ovia?
Mr. Ovia?
Yes.
George?
He's there. Yes, good answer.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
And I have one transfer that was requested from the um Construction Cluster uh Chair that we move from a plumbing equipment account, twelve thousand dollars, into the carpentry supplies. Um, he said he felt that the equipment that he had earmarked this for in plumbing, we were able to purchase last year, and that the funds would be better used in the carpentry shop um as their supplies generally run. Uh, that was one of his higher line items. So I'll need a a vote on that as well.
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Gigi?
Yes.
Mr. Getchea?
Yes.
Mr. Sheen?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Ovia?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
And finally, just a a quick update that we do now have a a full approved budget. So the budget that we, was voted by the committee in August, um has now been approved by Drake, Dunstable, and Pingsboro. So seventy-five percent of our supporting or our home communities have approved this budget. So now we are off of the one-twelfth budget process. That's our official budget at the time being. Even with the recent state numbers that have come out, the budget still holds, it still looks true to what we had in August. Um, so moving forward, we're ramping up and starting FY twenty-two budget.
Very good.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Ma.
Uh, old business, new business. Uh, I'd like to update the committee on the Facilities Naming Committee member appointments that were done at the October seventh uh Facilities Naming Committee meeting. Based on the naming of facilities policy, members should have been appointed to a three-year term, and some were not. In order to correct the situation, appointments were made by the superintendent and myself on the following seats. Ms. Deborah Gassy was appointed to a three-year term to fill the current teacher seat through fiscal year twenty-two. Mr. Robert Dick was appointed to a three-year term to fill the current retired teacher seat through fiscal year twenty-two. Mr. Tim Fallon was appointed to a three-year term to fill the current retired administrator's seat through fiscal twenty-two. Mr. Michael Knight was appointed to a three-year term to fill the current administrator's seat through fiscal twenty-two. Committee men Sheen and committee men Tatsias were appointed to fill the three-year terms to to fill two of the current school committee members' seats through fiscal year twenty-two. In addition, Ms. Kimberly Fabreeze was appointed to replace Mr. Dion as a parent member for the remainder of the three-year term. Ms. Fabreeze will be replacing Mr. Dion, who no longer has a student attending Grado Lowell. Committee men motions, reporter of subcommittees. Uh, I'd like to make, uh, I need a motion to enter executive session pursuant to Section twenty-one A two to conduct strategy sessions in preparations for negotiations with non-union personnel, superintendent and assistant superintendent. To enter into executive session pursuant pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one A two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparations for negotiations with non-union personnel, the school business administrator. To enter into executive session pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one A three, to discuss strategy with respect to the collective bargaining or litigation if an opening meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body and chair, so declares, teachers, custodians, maintenance, security, paraprofessionals, secretaries, cluster chairman, administrators.
I need a motion in to back call roll.
Are we gonna, are we gonna adjourn right from executive session? Or we gonna come back and adjourn?
Have to come back in.
Do we have, can I ask a question? Do we have to come back in?
We don't have to come back in.
No, I think you just have to stay if you're not.
Can we just?
Try to make a motion not to adjourn.
Okay. Just to, so one, and everybody else doesn't have to stick around. Like, we just do our business, and then those guys can go home.
Yeah, that's how I'm looking at it.
We don't have to come back in.
Yeah.
It's fine, I guess.
Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Gigi?
Yes.
Mr. Getchea?
Yes.
Mr. Sheen?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Ovia?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.